In the State Council Committee meeting, City Council Chamber, please have the five court street, Port Allen, Louisiana. Each person must decide before entering the chamber which agenda item they wish to comment upon. If they are not seated in the chamber when the agenda item is heard, they will be notified by an officer to enter the council chamber to address that agenda item. Public Safety Committee, call to order, pledge of allegiance. May we please stand?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number two, Examiner's Horn, please. Roll call.
Ms. Payne.
Ms. Joseph.
Yes.
Ms. Gordon.
Here.
Yeah, the horn.
Item number four, Police Department Report, Chief Mitchell, I mean Assistant Chief, Smith.
How's it going? How you doing? You guys doing?
Good.
Mayor Council, you guys doing all right?
Doing fine.
All right, I'm gonna give you the monthly police report for the police department. And this is for the month of September. So our agency responds to two hundred and eight calls for service, and they are broken down as follows. Our agency responds to twenty-two alarm calls, one assistive at our department, robbery, two suspicious calls, one trespassing call, one OPC call, ten disservice, eight death complaints, two shots, five complaints, five hit and run complaints, seven remain after fifteen complaints, custody, one custody matter, five harassment, one accidental damage, one Norris complaint, four assaults, seven checked persons, one suspicious activity, forty-seven medical calls, three non-harmful hang-up calls, two fraud complaints, two civil matter complaints, two traffic complaints, one burglary, three traffic stops, two battery complaints, one lost and found, four non-harmful return, one missing person, one suspicious vehicle, five alarm calls, thirteen local home reports, one domestic disturbance report, two check areas, two reports of violation court order, one assist person, two wire bound calls, and one warrant arrest. Incident by location, northeast of Port Number One at fifty, northwest of Port Number One sixty-nine, southeast of Port Street Number One thirty-eight, southwest of Port Street Number One thirty-six, and south of I-ten, fifteen complaints. So the month of September, our agency arrested a total of eleven suspects. One for hit and run, two with seven in peace, resisting arrest, fight from an officer, code intimidation, telephone arrest, simple assault, I get any death, remain unforbidden, all those warrant arrests, two theft charges, arrest, accessory vice fraud, arrest, two traffic related arrests, one future warrant, one drug related arrest. Our officers also worked a total of twenty traffic crash, traffic crashes, five private property crashes, and our officers issued a total of nineteen traffic tickets. So everyone have completed their monthly report for September?
Any questions?
Yes, I would.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, can you come see if you got somebody out there on the hall on Fourteenth and Union? If it's outside.
Okay.
They don't, they disregard that stop sign.
Okay.
It's gonna be a bad accident one day, it's waiting to happen.
Okay, that's right.
So I don't know if they just feel like they could just run through it, but they just totally disrespect that, that stop sign.
Okay, absolutely, I would definitely pass along.
Okay.
To your full patrol, and some officers there.
Um, thank you. And, I don't know, maybe we need to put something out there about breaking ball of glass, but we gonna have a lot of ties being fixed, than just going around breaking ball of glass in the middle of the street. I don't know if, how we can kind of curb that, but it's, it's beginning to be a big problem with the teenagers.
What area is that?
I think they just throwing it out the window, because it's on Port Street as well, on you what Linda's, um, Marisolon is.
Okay.
Um, they have a lot of glass that's normally in that area too, I saw myself Saturday.
Right, okay.
So I'm guessing they just throw whatever out the window.
Right.
Yeah, the best thing I would say is just, if you, you know, if you say something, just, you know, give us a call. I know those, those type of events are a little bit hard to attract versus some of the, you know, the other things that, that kind of go along with it. We'll definitely do our best to, to respond to it and try to address it. So appreciate your concerns. I'll definitely pass along.
Okay.
Any other comment for Assistant Chief? Thank you. Item number five, Nuisance Violation Report by Mayor Potting.
Good evening, Council.
Good evening.
Uh, so, I don't have a formal report like it was done, so we just kind of made a, a list. Um, my assistant and I, Ms. Lynette, we've been going out taking the pictures. Uh, we walked the Chappalaya, uh, so we do have those two that we mailed off, and I guess once they receive the notice, they are cut. So the two right here are cut, we took pictures of those, we sent them out. Um, so we also send another notice to abate to Mr. Theodore Malonsong, that's the six twenty-six Gladiola Street. Um, I know Councilwoman Joseph had called me about that. We had sent one before, he did come and acknowledge that he received the notice, he asked for more time, um, that time has passed, of course, we've had a lot going on, so we are giving him to the end of this month. I think he asked until the end of last month, nothing happened, so we will try to enforce it, uh, by the end of this month. And that's six two six Gladiolas. Um, also, um, Mr. Caruso on Fourteenth Street, six two two South Fourteenth, um, the awning that's fallen down, that's been brought to our attention several times as well, so we've resent that notification out. Um, and so we were called on Avenue B, we had to do a little research, and we figured out, um, it's an empty lot, twelve fifty Avenue B, it's abandoned property, grass and trees, uh, the neighbor is complaining of rodents, um, so we just mailed that out. Um, three fifty-seven of Chappalaya, we just mailed that out, and then three thirty-six Michigan, which we've talked about before, which is the HUD home. Uh, we contacted someone today from the HUD notice, uh, from that department, because it's several departments didn't realize within HUD, so Ms. Lynette talked to someone today, so that notice went out as well. So we'll be looking into those, the report for next month, to see if anything gets done. So the property at Rosedale in LA One, uh, since the notice went out, it has since been cut, um, and the properties at the Chappalaya, um, we sent the notices out, they have since been cut. As well as, um, the Riley House on Fourteenth Street, um, Ms. Joseph called me about that as well, I had already talked to him, um, so we're giving him a little time, we're gonna stay on him, but the neighbor is complaining about that as well, the house is open, um, so we're not sure if someone's in there or not. Uh, a tree fell, so he knows, we talked about the size, so we shouldn't have a problem with, uh, them cutting the tree up. Uh, I talked to him in the store, so, um, I gave him all the dimensions that were public requirements in order to pick up, so we've talked to that, and then I think Ms. Joseph had since talked to him as well. I don't know if you all have any others. We rode by again the Oregon Street with the dumpster, because we've been having complaints something, or somebody is dead hidden there.
Yeah.
We are, yeah, they said it smells horrible. So we, uh, went by there today, but the picture didn't show the name on the dumpster. So that was a little harder, because it was a house sold at tax sale. So we're trying to figure out who actually owns the house, but we will have pictures, accurate pictures tomorrow, because we wanted to take pictures today and we didn't get a good picture.
I think the, um, the original owner might know who the owner is, I think it was communicated about the dumpster, and I think whoever bought the house, they said, decided they didn't want the house, and I think the owner took it back over. I, I believe that they was trying to tell me that was what happened.
Because the neighbor outside today said they didn't know who it was now, because they heard it was sold again at tax sale.
Okay, okay, because I noticed that the owner had came back and got it, okay.
So I'm not sure, but we are looking into that one as well, because we've gotten complaints, several complaints about it.
You probably have to go to the, uh, tax office.
We've done that, she's called a treasurer, she's called everybody, um, so I, I'm not sure, we're gonna try to go through the dumpster company and see if they'll tell us, but the picture that we took, you can't really see the name of it, so we'll have to go back out.
Go a little closer.
Any other concerns or anything, um?
Oh, the blue house, it's already down.
That's under still litigation, so we can't, yeah, we can't do anything, okay.
Yeah. That's, that's all? Anybody else? Thank you, Mayor. Item six, adjourn. Public Works Committee, call to order.
Um, excuse us, Councilwoman Gordon, um, I ask that we amend this one before you get started, um, if you don't mind to hear from Mr. Tony Aricoff.
Okay, um, that's on the Public Works Committee?
Yes.
Okay. All right, um, Examiner's Horn, roll call please.
Ms. Gordon.
Here.
Ms. Payne.
Ms. King.
Here, yes, the horn.
Item four A, Tony Aricoff, would you like to come forward, please?
Thank you. Y'all, I appreciate it, and I just wanted to give y'all an update on a couple of the things that are, uh, happening. Um, first of all, and I passed these out, and I followed us for.
Hold on, man, we need to take a vote for, I'm sorry. She told him, I thought he did.
We will add, uh, we will add Mr. Aricoff's update, let's say three eight.
Three eight, okay, I said four eight, okay.
Do you have a motion to amend the, uh?
I have a motion to amend the, uh, yeah, April.
Yeah.
I make the motion.
Okay. Okay. Ms. Gordon.
Yes.
Ms. Payne.
Ms. King.
Yes.
Sorry.
Now you're fishing.
I'm sorry. Y'all, I asked the mayor, and, uh, she agreed that it was probably time for, uh, to update y'all on some of the public works projects, um, and I'll just, uh, just what's going on. Uh, we are continuing, the mayor is continuing to look at different treatment plant sites, and if you, uh, pull out your big sheet here, um, the, uh, red little square, that is actually an animal control off of Head Densel Road, and they, um, you, there's been some discussions with them and the mayor about maybe that being a, a available site. The one, the good thing about it, obviously, is it's out of the, you know, not in nearly housing or anything like that, and you can't talk with this map, but the parcel itself is huge, so there's really no other things around it.
I'm sorry, that said, is that's where the parish, um, right next to it? Okay.
Yeah, it's like the parish barn and the animal control. So obviously, as we get options and stuff, we're investigating them, and hopefully, uh, one of them is gonna pan out here. Uh, I, I brought back, and I'm sure some of the council people remember, at the beginning of the year, we went and looked at the treatment plan, and, uh, basically came up with a list of things that need to be done. Well, that was, uh, March, and we still need them. And so I was bringing, um, just reintroducing the list. The one thing I'll say, obviously, I don't have any idea on y'all's available funding, but, um, if you were to prioritize this, the first one would be number four, and the others would be one, two, three, and what you could do in a case like that is you could, um, you know, if you only had a certain amount of money, you could add, do additive alternates, and only accept the ones we have the money for. Uh, but all this stuff, y'all, I mean, your blowers are down to, if one blower goes out, we're not gonna have enough air at the plant, so these are all kind of very, fairly substantial issues. But, and because of the cost, you're gonna have to advertise it, so you're already forty-five days out. Um, the last is, uh, y'all recall, every year we do a road program, and, uh, I think normally it would have started by now, but, uh, we've got, uh, basically three streets that we're looking at, Avenue D, Avenue E, and Avenue F, all from, all from the river to South Alexander. The big reason all these are so expensive is because you've got a lot of, uh, you know, big oaks and stuff, and basically the base is, uh, is not reusable for you, we have to do a whole new base, and so any one of those is a hundred and eighty to a hundred and ninety thousand. Again, you could do, um, obviously all of them, you could do two, it just really depends on what your, um, you know, financial, uh, decision and capability is. I, I know that it's an annual program, so I don't know, um, you know, normally these projects are about three hundred and seventy thousand. I don't know if there's anything on either of these we need to have at the next meeting, Mayor, do they need to vote on it or anything?
Um, probably. I think we're gonna end up doing two, you know, two versus, and I did check with, you know, just one side versus the other side, um, the track side, um, all the streets have been done, except North Fifteenth Street, and North Fifteenth Street is concrete.
Concrete.
So it's going to take a lot more money than these two streets to get that one, so that may be something we try to look for next year, um, but all the streets on that side, um, have been done before, so.
And if you.
These have the dips that we rode through, and so.
If you, like Mayor, we could also do that as an added alternate, in case you get some really good prices, maybe you could actually afford all three, um, you know, the bids will tell the number.
Right.
One thing I'll say to the council is y'all have historically done this annually, and it really works, because y'all have the best roads in any of my clients. When I go home, I get aggravated, because I'm like, damn, I wish I lived in Port Al.
I have a question.
Yes.
For North Fifteenth Street, I do know it's concrete, so are we looking at the, the dig the concrete up?
I was thinking of the listed first and then go back.
Okay.
Yes.
That's what I.
It's very expensive, it's generally by the panel.
Right. Okay.
Tell them, tell them. On the wastewater treatment upgrades, how much, uh, on the four pieces are transferable to a new location?
Um, yes, ma'am, I mean, I know some of them gonna have time on you, but. Uh, probably one and two, actually, the two biggest ones, um, you could, uh, salvage parts of it, the influence screen and the compactor, of course, that's, those are gonna be stainless steel, so they'll be in fine shape, and blowers typically last you ten years, um, so you could certainly relocate those. I can't imagine that any plant we have is a good need blower, so you would be able to move those on.
All right.
Nothing, nothing's leaving next week?
Uh, I don't, I don't think so, I think we just, we advertise, obviously, the road program, and then we'll bring it to you for approval.
Okay.
Thank y'all.
Any questions? I don't know if you have a question.
Adjourn.
I have four.
Councilor, Councilman to the Development Committee, call to order, Examiner's Horn, roll call.
Ms. Joseph.
Ms. Joseph.
You first.
Gordon.
Here.
Yeah. Update on the Councilman to the Development Committee.
Yes, uh, the most exciting thing we're getting ready for, of course, is my.
Yes, uh, the most exciting thing we're getting ready for, of course, is on October twenty-sixth, when we have Nightmare on Court Street. So we're kind of putting all our efforts and looking for all the support that we can get. Uh, we got a few things coming in November and December, but I think we just kind of wanna concentrate on getting everybody involved. The excitement by getting all our young folk out and just having a great time with the city of Port Island as we have Nightmare on Court Street right down here at City Hall.
Have y'all sent out any communication to the school yet?
They went out, um, in the utility bills. So, um, we posted it. It has been shared on Facebook, on social media. But, um, they went out in the utility bills, uh, this morning.
No, I mean, to the school itself.
We didn't do the schools.
Well, we can.
You know, you probably can call the principal and send her email so she can announce it right now.
They probably can announce it as if they remember from the beginning of the day to the end of the day because.
Oh, I say, send them a flyer so they can post it on the desk, yeah.
I'll take it out.
Okay. So you got them handout across the street? There more than here?
Is it, I guess?
That's it.
Okay, discuss the, uh, replacement of the sign at the entrance of West Palm subdivision.
All right, let's see again. So, uh, in the beginning of the year, uh, I think actually they sorted, maybe last year, some of the, uh, citizens that live in West Palm addressed about their sign being knocked down. So I know I heard that campaign and I'm sure others did too. Um, so I told them that I would look into it, so, uh, I did. Um, so I first, um, talked to Mr. Ward, to Billy Ward, and he thought he had a sign that, because he did the subdivision. He started the subdivision, so I, I went to him, um, nothing. He never called me back, so this is where we are. Um, so I went to L and T Signs in Brulee, and they said the signs they do probably wouldn't fit for a subdivision. So, um, Mr. Tatum with Westview, I just asked him in talking, uh, one day. And so the guy that did the sign for them, he put me in touch with them. I think his name is Paul Mays. So he gave me, uh, two quotes that I told him that I would present, um, in October because I, I've had them after the council meeting in September. So one quote was, uh, two thousand eighty-two dollars and ninety-three cents. And that's the sign, which is a thousand eight eighty-five plus sales tax. Um, so if we agree, the city normally doesn't pay tax, so that will come off, so probably would be the eighteen eighty-five. Um, that's for the sign, aluminum coated sign with vinyl lettering and frame includes removal and installation. So they'll remove the bent sign that's up there, um, that I know people complained about. But we left it to give us some point to, to go to. I know it's bent, but at least we had a, a point of, you know, contact. So that's that one, and I have the dimensions. And then a nicer, uh, routed and painted HDU with wood frame includes removal, damaged frame and installation of new. It's five thousand two twenty-five, plus they have sales tax on here, but that would be the, the price of the sign. Um, I talked to a peo- a couple of people in the neighborhood. Um, they were supposed to get me someone that they were in contact with. No one ever called. Um, I didn't talk to anyone, so this is the only quote that I have to, to go off of, um, in looking into it. So, uh, you know, I'm just asking that you consider and put it as an agenda item if you choose, uh, either the eighteen eighty-five or the five thousand two twenty-five. Of course, the five thousand is the nicer sign, um, but I think they just wanted a sign.
Uh, Mayor, um, let me, uh, go back on this here. On West Palm, when the sign first got knocked down, the mayor, Lee, did replace it, which we were not supposed to, but he did it as a courtesy. So again, the second time it got knocked down, it was supposed to be on them because we're not responsible to replace their sign. They should have HOA or the neighbors, the neighbors should get together and buy it because we, we replaced the first time when it got damaged. Then if the second time it got damaged, they should have went over to the people who hit the sign or go after the insurance or whoever did. I don't think it's our responsibility to replace their sign when we had already replaced it once. So that means every time somebody's sign getting knocked down in the neighborhood, they come into the city for us to replace it. And when they should have their HOA or their home form, should get together and replace their own sign. We have replaced a sign once. Now, every time somebody hit their sign, we gonna be responsible to keep replacing it.
I never was told a sign was replaced there. I know he replaced the sign somewhere else.
No, it was West Palm.
That was the only reason why I looked.
This is the second time with their sign being damaged. The first time he did replace it. The second time he told me it was on them because he did it as a courtesy the first time.
Okay, well, and like I said.
I just kind of gave you the history on it, you know, and the, um, the neighbors, they knew because that was my district. And I told them the same thing when I had that district last four years, that, hey, we did do it as a courtesy the first time, but we can't keep doing a courtesy every time somebody hits your sign. You need to go over to the driver and take their insurance to pay for it. I don't think that's the city's responsibility to keep replacing their sign. But I, it's just me. I don't know how the other feel, but that's.
Right, and again, I just brought it to the council. It'll be up to you all if you wanna take a vote on it next week, um, and make it an agenda item.
Well.
They don't have a HOA. I spoke, I spoke with them about that. Um, they, they don't have a HOA.
Yes, we have.
That's the first I, I heard. I, I didn't know. I know we've replaced another subdivision sign. And so that's why I looked into this to, you know, do, do, do.
That's the second time they sent, uh, sign being damaged.
Well, I think if we do, do an abusification of the city, I don't think it would be a problem for the, it would be their last sign time to get a sign.
If you decide.
There's no sign. It is still gonna be a abusification of the city.
Well, if you decide not to, I will say this, that the metal does need to be removed because it does look bad. But we left it up, like I said, to have something to kind of go by, so it can kind of, I know it's bent, but to see something to go by.
Did they willing to pay half of it? The name, the, the neighborhood willing to pay half of the sign? Because really, it's not our responsibility to replace it. So are they willing to pay half of it?
I can reach out.
Yeah, I mean, who, who district is that? Walker Street in Axum, they willing to pay half on the sign? You know, because it's not, it's not the city's responsibility to pay for it.
I'm willing, I, I vote for it. I mean, because it does for bad citizens.
Yeah, y'all can put them in the. But y'all make sure when the next neighborhood come in and say they want their sign, I don't want y'all to say, oh, no, we not paying for the sign. You're gonna pay for the rest of them too.
I'm, I'm, I'm going.
I just opened up a can of worms, I'm telling you. You paying for your backside.
Okay. Discuss the property that owned by Ms. David Land.
Hey, I feel like I, I think we all have been flat. I've been working on this for a year with y'all, I believe. Um, the exception with this flat originally was a DMU. And the exception is the exception with the DMU. It's the, um, the five foot six, um, it's actually an exception with the DMU as it sits as it is. I just wanna let y'all know. And I'm asking for an exception so I can, um, provide the property is, um, what I'm asking for.
So council members, you've been given a, um, draft of the ordinance. So what Ms. Landry is trying to do, she would like to subdivide, uh, her lot. And you, I mean, you've all been given a copy of what the lot looks like right now. Under the current ordinance, she's not able to subdivide the lot, to go with planning and zoning to request, um, to subdivide the lot. And so the way that, what she's asking for is to amend the ordinance to allow her, and not just her, but other property owners who own a lot in the DMU, um, that has a, uh, two or more single-family detached dwellings on it, um, to go for the planning and zoning to request that it be subdivided. The way that we would do that is to amend the ordinance. Now, this was on the agenda in October of twenty twenty-four, but at that time, um, they didn't pass. So it's, it's, it'll be on the agenda for next week.
So the planning and zoning have to approve this?
Yes, ma'am. Well, they will make a recommendation to the council. So right now, right now, the way the ordinance is written, Ms. Landry or any other property owner in her position cannot even make a request to planning and zoning.
But until.
So what we doing? To, uh, to amend the, not just her, but other property owners who own the same type, you know.
The one that we already denied, so they could come back and do.
Because those structures were on the, on the property before the ordinance was revised in twenty sixteen. So the way that it's currently written, it doesn't allow her, the lot as it stands, to, you know, make a request to subdivide. So the, what would, what would be on the agenda next week is this ordinance that you've often given to amend the current ordinance to allow these properties who prior to twenty sixteen, you know, that the lots, you know, stood as they were prior to twenty sixteen and had these two or more detached dwellings on it, they cannot, they will be able to come, Ms. Landry included, in that come to be, come before the planning and zoning and request, uh, to subdivide. Right now, she can't.
They don't have the, the, the lot, the, the property, Swerfield Two subdivided, this is allowing them to do it?
This, this would allow her to come before planning and zoning to re- request for it to be subdivided. And the re- the way it's written, you know, the way the ordinance is written, so it goes before planning and zoning. They recommend, they can recommendation to the council, and then the council has the final say.
Okay, but we're, and it goes on the job that exists. Uh, you're not gonna have a, a lash of people coming out of your work.
We already had two.
It's only two. It's only two. And you have, you know, the DMU, correct me if I'm wrong, when it's inactive, it's, the purpose of it is to entice business. You have two types of.
So subdivide the land, the type business?
The DMU is supposed to attract businesses. Where you have, in DMU, you have a vertical development and you have a horizontal development. In her case, it wouldn't be vertical, it'd be horizontal if any. But I ask anybody, in the DMU, what have we had come now since two thousand six now?
Nothing.
Nothing. Okay, so am I saying get rid of it? No, and a few cases, correct me if I'm wrong, but this ordinance that's before all of you tonight is, she's grandfathered in, like I would be grandfathered in.
If it passed, it would?
Yes, if it passes, she's grandfathered in to make a request.
It would give her the, it would allow her to come before planning and zoning and say, hey, can I subdivide this property? Right now, Ms. Landry and other property owners like her who have these properties in the DMU district, they cannot even come before planning and zoning to say, hey, can I subdivide this property? Because the, the way the ordinance is written now, it doesn't allow for that.
So only basically we just giving permission to them to come to planning and zoning to ask for the subdivision?
Correct. You'll see on that first page, it says, you know, uh, in the event, a lot located in the downtown mixed-use district contains two or more single-family detached dwellings. Which dwellings legally existed prior to, um, the adoption of, of the new ordinance, April thirteen, twenty sixteen. The property owner of said lot may request that he or she be allowed to subdivide the lot. Any request to subdivide the lot shall be submitted to the city's Planning and Zoning Commission. That's the normal procedure anyway, but it's giving them the, uh, the permission to come before planning. Right now, Ms. Landry and other property owners like her in the DMU, they can't even come to request that it be subdivided.
Okay, so if we, if you subdivide this, so if you want to sell it, can you sell, sell it separate or you have to sell it together?
As it stands now, the lot is just one lot. If, if Ms. Landry wanted to sell it, she'd have to sell the whole lot as it stands. What she's asking for is a sub, subdivision. So on this map, I guess this line coming down the middle, right, is what you wanna, is how you wanna subdivide?
Yes.
She wants to subdivide it into two separate lots, so that way she can keep one, sell the other, or vice versa.
And it would, it would stay as a DMU, so I can't do anything different except I could sell as five-ten North Jefferson. If you look at it, if y'all grant it, I could sell five-ten North Jefferson or I could sell forty-four Maryland Avenue. But it would have to stay as a DMU. I can't, I can't add anything to the property. I can go up, but I can't add anything to the property. House.
It could only be a up.
Right, right, right. It would stay as a DMU, but I can't add to the property, house.
She's got, if you're not familiar with, she's got a home facing Jefferson, Cornellale and Jefferson. And then the, the second parcel, she has two garages and a full-size apartment on top.
That's a greenhouse, that's a home?
Yeah.
Yeah, and the utilities are already split. There's no, there's no, I have to do nothing to it except divide it. The, you, the, um, everything's already split. There's, there's no, um, thing I have to change except grant this.
So someone is standing in the other part on, uh, five-ten North Jefferson, two, and someone in the front, okay.
Yeah. That, I mean, everything, the, um.
So are you trying to sell it to them? They're living in five-ten?
In fact, the, the gentleman, um, that's living in four-four-four Maryland, um, he, he, a black, the black man that's living it, for he actually perks in Baton Rouge, and he wants to buy it, but I can't sell it to him because it's, it's.
One lot.
It's one lot. And like I told him, I can't sell it to you, uh, not unless I divide it. And he wants to buy it bad because he's, um, he's a single man and he, he's divorced. And he's, he's very quiet and it's peaceful here. He's just, he's a great man, you know? I mean, he, he's just, he's a good person, you know? I told him, if, if it happens, I can sell it to him, you know, he's.
And council, just so you are aware, it, it will be added to the agenda for next week. It will be the introduction of a ordinance, so it begins each next week. And then next month, it's gonna come back before you, the next month's council meeting for a final vote. So this is not, um, happening like right now.
It's just, you know.
And you know, when you look, when you look at it, it's jarring from the guy that's by there. You want, you want to hit the teller. I mean, she, they're knocking, put a sign out to, hey, I've been reached out. It's just.
I paid the two hundred dollars, I guess.
Yeah.
What, maybe six months ago, um, already?
Yeah.
Um, so. Does agenda, yes. Do y'all have any questions for me? Anybody? I don't know what I'm doing, uh, I guess, I guess I've done everything I need to do.
So it'll be, uh, the introduction of the ordinance will be on next month, weeks.
Am I good?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay, um, same thing with personnel committee, um, Mr. Goble.
Yes, ma'am.
Chief asks that we amend it to add to, um, his number four. Um, he has Aaron Nichols and he wanted to add Eric Ronnie.
You can add that as an, uh, agenda item four A just to.
Separate it.
Yeah, just.
Do we have a?
Okay, right.
Okay, we're gonna call a person that's committed. Okay, we're gonna call the personnel committee to order establish a form. Should we have a road call, please?
Mr. Hubbell?
Here.
Ms. Gordon?
Here.
Ms. Payne. We have a call, sir.
Okay, uh, okay, we need to amend it, and we'll make it as, uh, item four A.
Motion to amend.
Uh, make the motion.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Hubbell?
Yes.
Ms. Gordon?
Yes.
Ms. Payne. Motion passes.
Okay. Uh, item number four, discuss hiring one officer, Aaron Nichols, and the police department, pending their completion of their matrix, and then you're gonna do that in a second.
Excuse me, again. So that's right, uh, Mr. Aaron Ronicky was added along with Mr. Aaron Nichols. So these two individuals, um, they have over, both have over five years of law enforcement experience. I'll post them.
I think they're, they're gonna do it separate, 'cause that's a different four A.
Okay.
So just go over, uh, Aaron.
Do Aaron first.
Okay, sorry, so, uh, Mr. Aaron Nichols, he has over five years of, um, law enforcement experience. With law enforcement experience, they're backed to, um, Baton Rouge D. And, um, just like the agenda says, it's gonna be pending his, um, matrix test scores. And there's, uh, a person would like to, you know, move forward with that within our agency.
All right, move on to...
Oh, you do the gentleman?
Uh huh.
Yes, ma'am.
We had item four A, which is Aaron.
All right, good, good there. Uh, so Aaron Ronicky, Mr. Aaron Ronicky also has, um, over five years of more experience with law enforcement. And also dates back to, um, Baton Rouge Department and former, uh, PD with experience. And there's another, um, person we'd like to, to bring on to our agency.
We'll make that an agenda item, and, uh...
Yes.
I sat in on those interviews, and I was really impressed with those two.
Good to hear.
Aaron, like I told y'all, if I see you and him coming down there, I'm going the other way. That guy is big.
So y'all wanna know why I was the hub of saying that, uh, Aaron has had some height on him?
Yeah.
To be exactly one sixty-six eight, so a very, very tall individual.
Yeah.
So I can understand that position.
Okay, that's it. Okay, item number five adjourned.
Finance committee, call to order, establish forum, road call. Ms. Key?
Here.
Mr. Hubbell?
Here.
Joseph? Here.
Item number four, discuss increasing deposit fees for utilities.
Currently in our ordinance as well, so we'll have to do the same thing intro, um, for next week. Um, but currently, we have our water deposits at seventy-five dollars for water, and it's one-twenty-five for gas. So we're potentially asking, uh, and that's for residential. For commercial, we have water at seventy-five, and we have gas at two hundred for commercial accounts. So we're asking to raise those, um, because of the utility accounts that get left, especially in the cold months, uh, we're asking to raise that. So we're asking to raise the water to a hundred dollars, and that will be for both residential and commercial, because commercial water is the same currently at seventy-five. So we're asking to raise water to a hundred dollars, and we're asking to raise residential gas to two hundred dollars, and then commercial gas to three hundred dollars.
Man, why is the same price for the commercial than the resident?
Found it like that.
'Cause you know, they should be paying more for water than the resident.
The only thing for commercial accounts, they are charged, uh, impact fee. So instead of, you know, residents don't pay impact fees, the, the commercial accounts do.
Okay.
I don't know those amounts, thirty-five, I think, seventy, something. Uh, I'm not sure what the last one, 'cause I've, I've been doing that right now. But they pay the impact fee, so maybe that's why, I'm not sure. They do pay an additional cost depending on the business, nature of the business that they have. So we're asking to, uh, make that an agenda item for next week, for the intro to change for the ordinance.
Yes.
And five, uh, discuss the reconnect fees. So the reconnect fees now currently are ten dollars per meter. So that's in the ordinance as well, so we will have to bring that as well, intro, um, to try to change that. But currently, the, um, reconnect fees, so once we cut services off for utility customers, they pay ten dollars a meter to get back on. Uh, I think that's ridiculous. Sometimes our guys have to go back to the same house two or three times. So we're asking to move that from ten to fifty dollars, uh, each meter. So it'll be water and or gas.
I don't know, man.
You definitely changed your...
I did that, yes, yes.
I don't wonder what I engaged.
All right, thank you. Item number five, increase...
No, you did that.
You did that.
So item number six is adjourned.
Okay, so the first items that I have, um, Port Island High School breast cancer walk is, uh, October eleventh at nine A M. They have a QR code that's posted on Facebook, I'm sure on the school's page that you can register. Um, but I, I see that, I think it's ten dollars to register. But the walk is, uh, October eleventh at nine A M. Also, the hazardous cleanup, uh, Mr. Gilbo spoke about that today at the garden club. Um, it is October twenty-fifth, and I think we said that last, uh, council meeting, but he asked for us to post it on our website. So Ms. Rose will have that posted, and it tells what you can and cannot bring for the cleanup. And also, last but not least, um, our Nightmare on Court Street is October twenty-sixth. It's from five to eight, and we are asking for participation, um, in the Trumpet Tree as well as bringing the kids out to enjoy some scary fun.
Homecoming.
Homecoming game is Friday night, Port Island High, not sure where they play Glennops?
Don't, yes, yeah.
Glennops, uh, at Port Island High School, so come out and support our pals. And we just had the homecoming parade, uh, on Sunday. That turned out, uh, very nice. Any other announcements?
Start.
Motion adjourned? Motion.